Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is George Wolfe, Lower Paxton Township's manager, and I will briefly summarize tonight's business meeting agenda as the supervisors have taken the podium to conduct business. There are two items of old business this evening. The first is our annual proclamation of Arbor Day, with Arbor Day ceremonies to be held on the fourth Tuesday of this month at the Heroes Grove Memorial at 6:30 PM. That will be followed by action on bids for the collection of solid waste and recyclables in Lower Paxton Township. Under new business, there are three resolutions. The first authorizes submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for funding in support of an Oak Park Greenway study. The second is a similar grant application to the PA DCNR requesting funding to support Phase Two of the Heroes Grove project. The third resolution is the authorization for destruction of specified municipal records. And then there is a request for support being made to the township in regard to the Pennsylvania Conservancy to help support a grant application for funding of acquisition for a parcel of ground on Blue Mountain that would connect existing ground now owned in the public sector. Purpose of this grant application is for greenway and mountain land preservation. Ladies and gentlemen, that completes my summary of tonight's business meeting agenda. Again, the supervisors are at the podium and ready to conduct business.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe. We'll call this meeting the Lower Paxton Township Board of Supervisors to order. We'd like to ask everyone to please rise, and Mr. Judd will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let us move to the approval of minutes from the meeting of December 5th, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve the minutes of December the 5th, 2017, as prepared and circulated.
Approval of the minutes has been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Before we move into public comment, I would like to announce that prior to this meeting, the Board of Supervisors received information from the township manager. We discussed the scheduling of events, and we discussed the scheduling of upcoming meetings. We heard personnel information from the Public Safety Director, and we discussed a number of other employee personnel matters. And with that, is there any member of the public who would like to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Yes, sir. Please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
Do you mind if I hand you guys something? I apologize. I saw that you encouraged it to be done on Friday, but this is my first time here. My name is Michael Siget. I live at 2094 Fairway Lane. S is in Sam, I is in George, E is in Thomas. Okay. Thank you very much. I'll be brief. As I said, my name is Michael Siget. I live in Fairway Estates. And what you're seeing is a letter that I received not once but twice in the past week concerning recycling bins. And let me just say off the start, I'm not against recycling, and I agree with what's in this letter. A lot of times in our neighborhood with collection on Friday, and we seem to get the wind. There's times you're dodging recycling bins and garbage cans throughout our street. I don't have any problem with that. The issue I have is twofold. When I read this letter, I'm an attorney by trade, so when I read this letter, my first thought was, what ordinance is this? It does list what appears to be an ordinance, but if that ordinance is specifically in the township ordinances, I didn't find it. It looks like the closest thing I found was the ordinance to refuge or trash collection, which is not recycling, as you know. The recycling is in a separate section. So this may be an ordinance. If it is, I would appreciate someone pointing it out to me or asking in the future that letters tell the ordinance were apparently violating. Because as I said, the issue I have with this is, when I moved into the township two years ago, I think most people could probably say something similar. You sign up for trash collection, you're given the recycling bin that Waste Management gives you. They gave me one. That's what I've been using for two years. I come to find that apparently we have to have one of these big monstrosities in the back, which is when I called them this past week, it was easy enough, they came and delivered this to me. Now I have a very big recycling bin with a big, huge lid. But I would say, as I drive through the township on my way to work, and this isn't a tattle on everyone, there's a lot of people that don't have these lids. And if this is an ordinance, this is one that I think the township needs to talk to Waste Management about. Because any municipality I've ever lived in, the trash collector is the one that supplies the bins. And if you want all of us to have lids in our recycling bins, I think that's something you need to take up with Waste Management. Because again, I took the bin that they gave me, and it was just a regular bin that I used for two years. Now I have one of these. So again, it's not to complain about recycling or anything like that. It was more the contents of this letter that doesn't give the ordinance number so that I could have easily looked it up. And again, as I look at it, that has to be 36 gallons, it has to have a lid, it has to have two handles. The closest thing I found is the ordinance on trash or refuse cans, which is not recycling in the ordinances. So that was, so my ask is in the future, if this is correct, please have someone put the ordinance citation in your letters so that any of us can look it up and see if this is correct. And two, I think this is something that the township should be dealing with in your next contract with whomever gets the contract. If you want of us, all of us to have lids, have them, give them to us.
We're laughing because that's exactly what we're going to be doing tonight.
We've been having discussions about containers for the last couple of months. So yes, the discussion is currently occurring.
I appreciate it.
Can I? I just want to ask a question.
Sure.
You said, two years ago when you moved into township, you got a recycling container from Waste Management?
Mm-hmm. And I got one from them last week, too.
Okay, we don't even have a recyclable container from Waste Management. It's not been in our contracts at all. And as far as that back there, we have not approved anything to have those containers. So how did you get that?
I called the 800 number, told them that I needed a bin with a lid, and this is what they dropped off at my address the other day. So I now have two, I now have two Waste Man.
Really? Tom doesn't know either.
And again, if I'm not supposed to use that one, I won't.
No, no.
But the one that I started with when I called and set up my trash collection and recycling, they dropped off just a regular trash can looking one two years ago without a lid. And when I read this, I saw, well, I need to have a lid. So I called them and said, do you have one with a lid?
Well, how about, since I may be a little bit, because I got some complaints from people who, when the wind blows.
Oh, yeah.
You know. And there are certain areas where everybody's recycling when it blows around collects. And so a handful of residents end up having to clean up everybody else's trash.
Absolutely.
And that's, I think that was one of the reasons for looking around and, but as far as whether or not, George, are, do we have, does it spell out new ordinance or not, that recycling containers should have lids?
Off the top of my head, I, I'm sorry. I mean, off the top of my head, I don't know. I have to look into the codified ordinances. I do know that it's very clear in our website that all cans have to be of a certain size, of a certain weight, and have lids. Whether that transposes into the codified ordinances or not, I don't know. I can show you on the website in regard to solid waste and recyclables, that's easy. Ordinance search is a little bit more difficult.
All right. So it's something we encourage, it's something we.
I think the can size might be set forth in the bidding documents.
Right.
When we bid the trash contract. That's what I recall.
The letters really went out in regards to the lid issue, so I'm just looking for whether or not we, what standing we have. I'm just trying to clarify between an ordinance and a, what a professed policy preference, or I don't know what the difference is, but that's kind of why, I think, why this happens, because there was a problem area and.
I appreciate getting the letter that whoever complained, the township was responsive. No problems with that at all. I think this was great. But again, I'm looking at this, and I see this looks like an ordinance to me that was being cited.
Well, there can be a difference between an ordinance and a policy, too. So.
Can you enforce a policy and fine me if I don't have this stuff?
I do not believe anybody has been fined, to my knowledge, for it. I look at this letter, and I see, I mean, it doesn't specifically reference an ordinance, but it would seem to me to be common sense practices, at the very least. And to my knowledge, nobody has been fined or otherwise punished for it, aside from those people who have to pick up their neighbor's trash because it blows around. But in answer to your question, this is currently under active discussion. So your timing is perfect. So.
I guess now the only thing I'll say in our close, I'm not sure what recycling bin to use now. After what, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Mrs. Lindsey.
After what Mrs. Lindsey said now, I don't know which recycling bin I should be using.
I've been a homeowner for 39 years, and Waste Management has never given us a recycling container. That's why.
They told me it was part of our contract.
Well, in Lower Paxton Township, recycling, all containers are currently the responsibility of the property owner or resident, and they have never been provided by Waste Management, unless Mr. Stang can speak otherwise in regard to what Waste Management has done.
I will address if you'd like.
Ladies and gentlemen, Tom Stang is the Operations Manager of Waste Management of Pennsylvania. Sorry, Tom.
No problem. Good evening. Tom Stang from Waste Management. I'm surprised to hear that you had a cart delivered to your home.
And that one was the yellow lid.
I believe that after you saying that. It's not a typical practice. I can only assume that our call center was trying to appease you by saying you wanted a recycling container with a lid and sent that out to you. I do know that throughout the years, the township residents have been responsible for their own recycling containers. Occasionally, you may even spot some of our recycling bins or containers out throughout the township. That has happened at times when people have moved in and brought their recycling container with them, but it's not a practice of ours to provide a recycling container. I can't answer as to why. It is not part of the contract. We understand we're currently in the middle of making a decision of awarding a contract that would include carts or not include carts. So, and in the case of your other recycling cart, I do know that even though some people will move and bring it along with them, there have been people that we've provided a recycling bin or container to, because I can't imagine they, it's everybody just moving and bringing it along with them. But, yeah, it's.
So how did they, how did you provide to some residents of the township when it wasn't in the contract, and other people were not provided with one? How does that happen? Just by him calling?
In this case, I can't, I cannot explain why someone would have delivered a car, other than if a call center representative heard a customer specifically ask for a lid recycling container, and that they thought that that was part of the contract without looking at.
I was just talking about the one that he got two years ago when he moved in.
I'm not sure why that either. It's really not something, it's not a.
Okay, well, we're going to, we're going to have a discussion about the trash a little later on in the agenda. Did you have something you wanted to add, sir?
I'm just going to finalize. You guys are coming to pick up the other one tomorrow. Hold out the lid, I was told it will be picked up on Wednesday, I'm going to leave it out on the curb.
Okay.
And just an approbation for Mr. Stang. I have new neighbors who came from another municipality, and when they found out we did not have containers, and saw other ones before they had settlement, brought their cans with them. So yes, they do.
Apparently trash cans are a very valuable commodity.
They must be very valuable. I was surprised.
And we don't, we don't want, the whole reason for the letter, whether it's an ordinance or a policy or just good manners, was just to encourage people to please get a container with a lid, because there's a handful, more than a handful of residents who suffer greatly when we have those windy days. So it's really, the whole point of this was simply to ask people to think about something that they probably, you know, is not on the top of their to-do list, and just understand that when it gets windy, your stuff's going to blow around, and someone else is going to have to pick it up, and please use a lid. That's all. I don't want the message to get lost.
And many people take their lids off and put them in their garage so the lids don't blow away.
Well, however fascinating this has been, is there any other public comment on an item not on the agenda? Mr. Murphy?
Joe Murphy, 5877 Laurel Street. I'm here tonight as chairman of the Lower Paxton Township Historical Commission to remind everybody, our second meeting is coming up this Thursday at 6:00 here in this room. We're going to be working on our goals that we're setting up, and when that's complete, we'll be coming back to see you, ladies and gentlemen, to present everything to you. But I did want to let the residents know that we're inviting everyone to come and participate. Our first meeting was fantastic because the audience helped us design our mission statement and helped us get started, and we're hoping for the same type of attendance. And secondly, as a resident, I want to thank you very much for streaming. This morning, I sat and watched the last meeting, and being a person that has DirecTV, it's the first time I've been able to see all of you nice people on TV.
Uh-oh.
And so it was fantastic. And mute works. So I just want you to know that if there was something I didn't want to hear, I could mute it. Thank you.
How do we look in the morning versus how do we look in the evening?
Wow. That mute switch sounds like an idea we need to explore a little bit more. I will say that it's very enjoyable, all the photographs of what was before, where something else is now that have been popping up on Facebook are very fascinating, so.
Brings back memories when I was younger.
Well, keep it up. Keep it up. Okay, if there is no additional public comment, we'll now move to comments by board members. Do any board members have a comment?
I would like to give a report, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Christman.
Earlier today, the members of our audit committee met with Zelenkovsky and Axel Rod, our public accountants who do our audits. We met to review the 2017 audit. There were three issues. Number one, there is a change of staff from ZNA. They have a new partner that's assigned to our project. However, the old partner will continue so that we have very, very smooth transition until such time the new partner feels very comfortable with us, and we in turn feel comfortable with them. That was our requirement, and they have acquiesced to that. They also have identified to us that in fact, there will be a single audit required for our CDBG grant because it's in excess of $750,000. As I said, that will require a separate audit, so there will be an additional cost that will be approximately $5,500 to the township. But again, it's a requirement, it's not an option. And then thirdly, was simply a status report from one of the members of their team indicating that they're now waiting for, or they will be addressing letters to the various schedules of accountants outside firms that need to report information back to us, as well as collecting our minutes and our agendas, because they're required to review all of those before they can finalize their audit reports as they move forward. So anyway, it was a very profitable meeting with ZNA, and I ask them to please be assured that they continue to do as they have done in the past, and that is to give us clean audits. We have been very, very fortunate. We have an excellent financial staff here, and we have an excellent accounting firm. They work independently very well. They work very well together as a team, and as a result, I think we have had very clean audits. That has been published over the last several years, and I'm very proud of this municipality for what it does and for the accounting firm that we have. So it was a very profitable meeting, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Christman. Will that audit be posted then on our website?
Yes, when it's, when it's been completed.
There's a public advertisement of the audit, and we can post it on the website, not a problem.
Very good.
And that has always been public.
Any other board members wish to make a comment?
I just had two items. I just wanted to make everyone aware, we did have a two-alarm fire yesterday out at the terraces, so please keep the families that were involved in that in your prayers. And also, I attended the Heroes Grove meeting yesterday, and that is on the agenda. Ms. Hunter will be talking about that later.
I just have, really, I have a comment or a question directed to Mr. Stang. I see you're on, under old business, under solid waste and recycling. I assume you'll be making a presentation at that time?
No.
Well, I will have several questions that I, you know.
He's not making a presentation.
Yeah. My wife should be here because she's in charge of.
Not a presentation, but available to answer any questions that the board might have relative to the bids that were going to be.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'll have several questions. My wife should be here because she's in charge of recycling and trash, so.
I'd like to know how you accomplish that. That's a good, but there will be a questioning opportunity when we hit that agenda.
I just want to make sure that that was upcoming.
Any additional comments from board members? If not, Mr. Wolfe, our manager's report.
Just two brief items that are important to our community, and these are social items. The first is a chili cook-off and car show family day at the Friendship Center. That is on our website. The event is on our front page of our website. Event is to be held Saturday, April 28th, beginning at 8:00 AM and continuing through to 1:00 PM. Of course, chili cook-off wouldn't be a chili cook-off without chili. So anybody who wants to sample chili is more than welcome to participate, and the chili cook-off committee is now looking for individuals or teams to cook and provide chili at the event. There will be a car show, there will be a kids yard sale, there will be music, and it will be a fun morning at the Friendship Center. So I'm inviting everybody to attend in some capacity on Saturday, April 28th. And then our Arbor Day ceremony in Lower Paxton Township, Mr. Chairman, and you'll be reading the proclamation of that here in a minute, will be on Tuesday, April 24th, at 6:30 PM at the Heroes Grove facility, and a tree will be planted by the Shade Tree Commission in conjunction with a local Girl Scout troop. And that's what I have for you this evening, board members.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe. That takes us to old business, and as you just mentioned, we do have a proclamation for Arbor Day. I would like to read the proclamation, which the board will then hopefully approve. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday, called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our township increase property values, enhance the economic viability of business areas, and beautify our community. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Lower Paxton Township does hereby proclaim April 24th, 2018, as Arbor Day in Lower Paxton Township, and urges all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands, and to support our township's urban forestry program. And if approved, it will be done so this third day of April 2018. Do we have a motion to approve the Arbor Day proclamation?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And we have a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, and we'll look forward to seeing everyone at Heroes Grove for our Arbor Day program. That brings us to Item B under old business, action on bids for the collection of solid waste and recyclables. At this point, I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Christman. I would have a conflict of interest in this matter and have recused myself from any discussions involving it. Mr. Christman.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Henry. We were, addressed to Item 7B, which is the action for bids of solid waste and recyclables. Members of the board, before we begin, I'm going to ask you, I think it's for a point of reference for our discussion, if you go to the memorandum where it has listed the base bid, the base bid for our two addendum items, one for the base bid and the leaf waste, and for the base bid and the 21 leaf and totes. Before we do that discussion, I'm going to ask council if all three bids have been, have met all the requirements, so that we may consider all three, or if there are any that are, need to be eliminated because they've not completed properly all of the requirements.
Mr. Christman, all of the, all the bids were responsive to the request or the invitation to bids, and all of them complied with all the requirements of the bidding documents.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Board members, I'm going to suggest procedure for this, that in fact, we reach consensus, at least hopefully on the three items, so that we only have to do one motion for this. If not, we're going to go through a series of three or four motions. I would hope that we will not have to do that, if we can reach through our discussion, at least a consensus. Remembering two things. Number one, that because there are only four of us involved in the process, if we make a motion, or when we get to the motion stage, if we have two votes for and two votes against, that is not sufficient, the motion will fail. And secondly, I would want to remind you that the chair does have the right and option to make a motion. So with that, I'm asking for at least confirmation that we can at least have the discussion, and then hopefully reach the stage where we can make one motion to implement this. Is there anyone who objects to that?
So if I understand, we have, basically, we have four options as far as what kind of service, and we have three bidders.
We actually have three items. We have the base bid that we need to consider, then we all, second issue we need to, we need to resolve, is whether we have 19 leaf waste pickups, which is current, or 21, which was, I'll call option one for consideration. And then the second item is whether in fact, we include the totes to be included. So the, I mean, if we were making a motion, if I had to go through the series of motions, the first motion would be to accept the base bid. Obviously, this one's rather straightforward, inasmuch as low bid here is Waste Management. And so the, if I were going to go through all the bids, I would, I would make a motion to approve Waste Management as the low base bid, and that we include the 21-leaf waste pickups, and that we include the totes. I'm not certain, because I don't know how each of you feel, whether in fact, that's what you would endorse. What I'm suggesting is that we have discussions about, and do them one at a time, on leaf waste, whether we're endorsing or supporting 19 or 21-leaf waste pickups. And then once we may perhaps reach consensus, move on and have discussion with regard to the totes, to see if we have consensus there. If we, if we have a feeling where we're going, it's much easier to make one motion to include whatever it is that we think it is, rather than going through four motions. rather than going through four motions. That's my thinking.
Okay.
Okay?
You want us to?
So if, if, yeah, if that's an agreed logistical thing, then let's start with one I think that is the easiest of the three that we have to consider. And that is our base bid. And again, because we're obligated to go with the lowest bid, this one would be straightforward that our base bid to waste management in the amount of 16988, 655 is the low bid. And that would be the, the award, the, I'm sorry, period. The award would then go to waste management for the base bid. And I think that one is a given. And so therefore, I think we need to move on, at least for some discussion with regard to consensus with regard to whether we want 19 or 21-leaf waste. And so I think we, the board, should have discussion. Then I would ask the community if they have any comments they'd like to make on that given issue. The reason I'm having community wait is because if there's a consensus here that that one is not even going to fly, then there's no point in wasting our time to have further discussion. Okay? All right, so let, if that's acceptable, then let's begin with our, the leaf waste pickups. We currently have 19. The addendum that we had asked to be included was that it be increased from 19 to 21. 21 means, George or Tom, either one of you can correct me on this. But with going to 21, it literally means that we would have leaf waste pickup every other week. We currently have a schedule that's put out and there are periods of time when there is not leaf waste. I can tell you, and I'll make that as my comment, then I'll give you, that's what is. I'll give you my comment with regard to that. I would support the 21 for, for a couple of reasons. One, I believe that it's much easier for our constituents to know that it is every other week as opposed to where did I put the chart to know if this is the week and then I have to call the township and then the township has to respond, well, let me see what day you are and this is when it is, or them calling waste management, is this my week? Or they put it out thinking it is their week and it's not their week and then it sits out there for a week. So that would be my reasoning for supporting going from 19 to 21. And I don't know how the rest of you feel, but that's just my opinion on that particular addendum.
Well, Gary, I'm going to agree with you. I do support the 21 weeks because it's very confusing for the residents because I know in my neighborhood, it'll sit there for like an extra week.
Exactly.
So because I think most people, they don't look at the bi-weekly, they think it's just every other week. So I would support the 21, the 21-leaf pickup.
Bill or Chris, do you have any comments?
That's okay with me. Yeah, it's 11, I'm reading 11 cents per month would be the additional cost. So.
I guess I'm a little bit confused and excuse me for that, but you're mentioning the leaf-
Waste.
Leaf waste is what we're talking about.
So that's the stuff that you put in the brown bags that people were putting out bi-weekly. Now they could put out every other week. So it's like they're sticks and they're, you know, leaves that they might have picked up after, you know, the leaf people might have been there or haven't been there or stuff in the summer. Because your grass goes with your garbage, G.G., grass garbage. And then your leaf waste is stuff that you've picked up. You might have trimmed a tree, broke it up and put that kind of stuff in the brown bags that you can buy at Lowe's and Costco's and Home Depot.
I guess I'm more concerned, you know, right now with the recyclables versus what I refer to as trash.
Yeah, well, that'll be the next thing.
You're talking about the totes. We're not, we're not having that discussion yet.
We're just going to talk about the leaf waste first.
Okay.
Yeah, just the leaf waste. Should we keep it at 19 or go to 21 pickups?
Okay.
So either bi-weeky, bi-weekly or every other week.
Yeah, but the bag, we do, we put them in bags. So that's, you know, that takes care of that question, but mine goes-
We're not there yet.
So would you like to have 21 weeks, like every other week? That they would pick up every other week instead of bi-weekly? Because sometimes it'll sit out, yeah.
All right, okay, good. I think we have a consensus. Is there anyone from the community that would like to address just that piece?
John, 600 Prince Street. I, I just want to know what, what, what the money costs are associated with each item that you guys are considering so that I can say, I'm getting a 5% increase in my tax bill, a 10%, a 20%? I went online, I looked at the memorandum and you've got four or five charts on there. One has a base bid for 18-something. Then the next page has a base bid of 690 or something. And then the next has another addition. Then if you go with the totes, there's another addition.
Right.
I mean, can we pay some dollars with the-
John, what, if you're looking at what we were looking at, you will see the base bid for the trash pickup. And then in our second column, we talk about the base bid and going from 19 to 21 pickup and what that cost is. And then we have a third one, which is the one that will deal with the totes and what that added cost is.
I understand.
He wants to know what he's going to be paying monthly.
Exactly, Mr. John.
So I'm looking at the base collection service. It looks like year one, 1895 per month.
And how's that compared to what we're paying right now?
It's cheaper. It's cheaper. It's almost a little less.
But once you add everything else in, where are we going to be standing?
Well, like I said, the, the, let's, let's go through it. And the, the leaf change we're talking about, as I'm reading it, 11 cents, 11 cents per month.
Right.
So you start at 1895 and, and then you would add 11 cents for that change.
Correct.
And as far as the current. Current is 1997.
1997 is current.
Per month for the first year.
Right.
For what we're paying now.
Correct.
Exactly.
And for the first year of the new contract with the leaf waste, it would be $19.06.
Right.
Yes, with the 21. Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
With the 21-leaf waste. So John, it's eight, or Mr. Trish, I shouldn't call you John, Mr. Trish. It's 1895 plus 11 cents. So that comes to 1906 per month and you would get two extra pickups on your leaf waste.
Well, I, I compo's mine, but.
Okay.
Now, and by the end of the fifth year, the base, because it goes up every year, it'll be 2072 per month.
Well.
Plus 11.
If I read it wrong, I read it wrong, but on the first sheet it has 18-something. Then the second proposal adds, I think the first year was like six dollars, three dollars?
Say that again with what?
No, these are all, that's per container. These are different services. So for, for, for your comparison sake, you just want the base amount plus leaf.
Okay, and then the very last sheet said that if you go with the totes, it's a dollar six the first year, a dollar-
We didn't get there yet.
We're not there yet.
We'll do just the-
But is that added into the 19?
That'll, that'll be added if we go that route. That will be added.
And we're not there yet, John. I'm trying to do each piece separately so it's easy to understand.
Well, what's easy to understand for me is every quarter I'm going to pay this for my trash compared to what I'm paying right now.
Right, but we need to-
You guys can do all the technical legwork.
But we need to know what it is that we're going to include. We're not there yet. Okay? All right. Having completed that discussion, then I'd like to move to the third part, which is now the tote addendum. And that also has been included as consideration to be in this. And I know that there's diversified thinking on this one, so I'll let you all speak and then I'll make my comments as well.
I'll speak up first. I am not in favor of the totes. I've gotten a lot of comments from people that they're saying, I don't have anywhere to store them. Especially residents that have an HOA, they are not allowed to have the totes outside the house. They must be inside the garage. People have called. I've had three homeowners associations, their presidents have called. And they're saying that if a lot of our residents have one-car garages and with the HOA it has to be inside and with the large 96 one, they're saying that they wouldn't be able to pull their car inside because it's very, it's very close. I've had some older residents call and they're just saying, they were watching the meeting the other week, saw the, you know, the tote and they're just saying it's going to be too heavy for them. I'm going to be right up front with you. If I had to do it myself, I think it would be too heavy. So we have to think too, we do have a lot of older residents that live in our township and I think that's something that we need, we need to consider.
And that's similar to, to where I'm coming at it. I've only heard from people who oppose it for the, the exact same reasons. And I've been looking for reasons, what is the benefit, what would the benefit be of going to the totes? And that's what I'm waiting for. I'm waiting to hear, because I don't see a financial benefit. And so that's what I'd like to hear before I make my decision.
And, and my thought is, because Mr. Stang is here, I would really like him to give us the pros and cons because one of the issues is, is the gentleman raised back here, you know, with lids, whereas if they're provided, the lids are already there. There is a consistency, but this is the reason I'd like him to respond, the pros and cons. Because all three of the bidders in a pre-bid meeting or asked for a special meeting and one of the things all three of them asked for was for this type of tote. It's obviously a move by the industry. If you drive around in other municipalities, that's what I made a point to do, to drive to other municipalities to see what they are using. And many of them have already made the switch or are making the switch or like my neighbors who liked them and brought them with them when they settled on their house. So I'd like Mr. Stang, if he would respond to us with regard to pros and cons and why everyone is moving in this direction. And perhaps, and I'm going to add to that because a question was raised to me that I was unable to answer, Tom, and perhaps you can, that with these totes, that there is, your system, it's an automated system to lift and take care of them. And so one of the questions that was raised of me was, well, I happen to live in an older, older part of the community in Lower Paxton. We do not have off-street parking. Our cars must park on the street. So if it's automated, how do, how does the waste management or the garbage company pick up our trash as opposed to those where they have off-street parking and they can go right down the street? I know that's two questions, but if you could, I don't care which order.
I'll address that one.
Oh, I don't think your mic is on. Is the green light on perchance?
Okay. We'll try that. Okay.
You just need to-
I'll just come down a little bit.
Thank you.
When we service the contract now, we are in the township five days a week and we run three trash routes and we run three recycle routes. So we have six trucks running through your township, Monday through Friday. And they're traditional rear-loading trucks where they load it in the back for the trash and side-loading trucks where they load it in the side for the recycling. With the cart system, we will use automatic equipment. And what we've figured into our cost of operation is we will run two trash trucks automated and two recycle, two trash routes and two recycle routes with automated trucks where an arm will come out, grab the cart, pick it and dump it and then it'll, it'll, it'll collect the trash that way. We're well aware of on-street parking and carts that would be placed at the curb and in-between cars or up on the curb and we'd have to pull in between. And that's why we are going to be running a portion of our route. We're going to keep with the traditional rear-load trucks and the side for trash and the side-load trucks. Actually, we'll run two rear-load trucks. We'll run a rear-load truck for, traditional rear-load truck for trash and a traditional rear-load truck for recycling. And they will run the portions of the routes where we have the on-street parking and we're not able to get to with automation. So that should-
How will they be able to lift that 96 gallon if it has like, I mean, they just put 50 pounds of garbage in it the other week here. What if that has 150 pounds of garbage?
It's semi-automatic where we, where in a traditional rear-load truck where a guy will grab a can and pick it up and dump it. We have flippers that are mounted on the back of the hopper. The hopper is the area that stores the trash when you dump it in. We have flippers that you hook the cart onto the flipper and the flipper will flip. So it is, it's semi-automatic, but you still will have a driver with a loader on the back of the truck that will go between the parked cars, pull it out to the truck, hook it onto the flipper and the flipper will, will pick up the cart and dump it. So it's, it's semi-automatic. So that's, that's our-
Yeah. Can I ask you another question?
Sure.
Are you going to then, some of your people are going to lose their job because they're going to have arms now and not the person that's going to run and pick it up?
We, we won't lose, we won't lose employees. There's other places, there's plenty of work. And I can tell you that in our industry today, it is becoming more and more difficult to find people that want to do what our guys do day in and day out. And one of the things that we've worked very hard at doing, it's more difficult to, I apologize for not giving enough eye contact this way. I'm trying to stick with the microphone, but what we've started to do is the people that we hire to keep the, the guy that's a loader onboard, we are working with them to get their CDL so that they can become drivers. And we'll, we have many of our routes now where the guys are both drivers and the guy that's on the back also has a CDL and they can switch throughout the course of the day. And it's not one guy taking all the physical side of it. But the industry is getting very difficult and part of the automation process eliminates injuries and will leave haulers in a position where they don't have to hire as many people and have such a difficult time keeping people that want to do that in the elements day in and day out. We will, we will not be losing guys on this particular, because my recycle routes are already one-man routes. My three trash are two-man. I'm going to wind up keeping rear-loaders, one for trash, one for recycling. And then there would be really one guy that will, we have plenty of space and work for, for him to, to act.
I know that was a concern with some people that had called.
That's, that's, that's good that they're concerned about that, but we, we will not lose any employees with, with a cart contract.
Well, I'm-
Tom?
I'm, well, go ahead. Were you, were you still, were you still going? I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm good on, if, if you're good with my explanation of how we will run the routes and get in between the truck, the parked cars on those curbs, we're not going to be using the automated trucks. All automation, we know that we're going to have to have areas with the semi-automated and the traditional rearloads.
Okay.
And ultimately, I guess.
Ultimately, I guess the industry needs to do this. I mean, ultimately, it's to save, it will save you labor costs at some point. I mean, that's, that's the whole point of moving to automation and there's nothing wrong with that. I don't, I understand that.
It's certainly to save labor costs. The cost of that equipment is much more expensive than the cost of a traditional rear loader and the cost of the carts. You can see, you can see from the results of the numbers that the, the cost in automation is higher.
Right. And that's, that's what I was looking for. What is, what do I tell these people who for, who belong to homeowners associations and going to have to handle, handle this change and find space for these? And what do I tell them is the benefit for us making this change? I still haven't found out what the benefit is to the people.
And, and just, so you know, we're responding to a bid that was asked for us to quote-
No, 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 this is not, I'm, I'm, I'm not putting this on you. You're doing, you did exactly what you were supposed to do.
Some of the benefits, there's, there's certainly pluses and minuses with both sides of it. All right? And what your residents may be saying as far as the size of it, and I have a one-car garage and fitting it in there, that certainly is a concern. The footprints of those carts is bigger than what the footprint might be now for trash, for one trash can or one recycling container. But if a resident has three trash cans in their garage, the footprint of a cart is going to be less than what the footprint of three trash cans would be. So I, we know and we understand that in the industry, that people have a concern when they see these carts. That, but we have seen and, and know in this industry- That, but we have seen and, and know in this industry that when people get these carts and put them into place, you will have some people that will, uh, fight it and argue it, but it's going to be a small minority, a small group of people that will have a problem with that. People fall in love with the carts and the automated system. It does eliminate a lot of the blowing of debris. It eliminates not just blowing out while the container is still standing, but also as traffic goes by and a- a- after trash cans are emptied, uh, they're light and cars can go by, and, and, and the, the cars will basically pass and the wind will pull a trash can basically out into the street, and that doesn't happen with the carts. When you see the human, u- uniformity of a cart-lined street or alleyway with carts, it really does make your community a much cleaner place. And one of the other benefits to a cart system, the small carts that residents are using right now, um, you will, if you go to a, a recycling cart of 64 gallons, you will see your volumes of recyclables increase. Right now, what happens, we believe in, and when I say we, it's industry, uh, when, when, uh, recycle bins get full on a weekly basis, the other recyclables don't go anywhere other than into the trash container. And we have experience where, when we implement a cart program, we will see a difference of anywhere between two and three pounds per week move from the trash into the recycling. So you'll see an increase in your recyclables, which is an increase in grant opportunities for the township. And if you take two to three pounds, or two and a half pound average over 14,000 residents with your, within your township, that number can add up and make a difference. As a matter of fact, part of the difference in our price, even though the cart contract is more expensive than the traditional rearload, we move that number in my costs. We pay $85 a ton to dispose of trash right now. And if I can move two to two and a half pounds out of the trash stream into the recycling stream, we do that, we did that in our numbers. I'm sure the other haulers did as well. There is a cost savings on the disposal side.
Couple of basic questions. 64 is the smallest you can get?
Sixty, there, there are smaller cart containers with, wheeled carts with lids. There are, there are 35-gallon containers.
Well, as I read this gentleman's letter, it says 36 gallons capacity. 64 seems maximum for my house. You don't provide them though, we have to buy them, right?
We, we, we're going to own the carts, we provide the carts. That's, the, as the specification-
Do I have the ability to guess just one?
Um, sure, I mean, if you just, one of the other options, it's part of the contract, if you're a low-volume trash generator, and you don't generate much trash, you can go on the, the bag program where you will pay for your trash based on the number of bags that you throw away week after week. So you could go with a bag program and not have the big 96-gallon trash cart and use a 64 for recycle and, and just put a bag out every week, or every other week with your, with your services.
Part of my problem is that, uh, you go up to Lowe's or Home Depot or whatever, and you buy these carts with wheels on, and they're not as sturdy as these. And before you know it, uh, six months, eight months go by. And I apologize for saying it this way, but the whole bottom is broken out. And it has wheels on it, and they seem to drag them, not using the wheels. And then we go up and spend 40, 50 bucks to replace it.
Um, under the standard program, the, the base contract, you would still be dealing with those issues. If you went with the cart contract, there are carts, we're responsible for them. If, if a cart is broken or damaged, uh, we replace it. I mean, if it's, if it's happening on a consistent basis, if a snowplow hits it and breaks it up, or somebody at their home continues to bust it up, and it's not a result of, you know, the traditional servicing of it, and there's something crazy that's going on. But, um, we, we're responsible for the carts.
But you could use a cart interchangeably for trash or for recyclables?
Uh, no, you cannot do that. My guys will look at the yellow lid and know that that's the recycle cart, and the green lid is the trash cart. So if you fill the recycle cart with, uh, trash, it will not be, it will not be picked up.
It will not be picked up, so you have to have one for each?
If you, if you are not under the bag program, yes.
And according to the bag program, if I read it right, um, we're, if you are on the bag program now, you're paying $4. So if you do the bag program under the new contract, you would be paying $6?
$6 per-
So that's going up $2 per bag?
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yes.
And then, um, we were told early on, when the presentation was, that, like, say somebody backs out of my driveway and runs over my trash can. In order for me to replace that, I have to pay $80, is that true? I mean, I want to know how much the trash can is to replace it, if it's my fault? Yeah, the, one of the carts.
I think if, uh, if, if it's a one-time deal, we would replace it.
Okay.
If you keep backing over the cart and keep breaking it, then we would probably charge you to have another one. The cost of that cart, probably $75, so 80 you're not too far off.
It is 80, okay.
It wa- I, I don't think it was part of our quote in our bid package.
No, no, it was not part of the quote, it was just in a discussion at workshop.
Okay.
That was one of the questions, um, what if the, you know, it would get damaged? And if you had to buy another one? Um, it, what if somebody steals it? Um, you know, you have it out, what if you don't get home from work and somebody ends up stealing the container? Then you have to buy a new one, and we were told it would be approximately $80.
If, 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 if a cart is stolen, we will replace the carts. And we, when the carts are delivered, they, we have RFID readers. We know that this numbered cart is at this particular address.
So if someone stole it, then you, if somebody else was using it, you could tell?
I mean, we could go out and, and hit it with a scanner and read it and say, oh, this is supposed to be at your home.
Okay.
But typically, when you're, when you're within a cart contract and everybody has carts, carts don't necessarily, uh, walk away as frequently as if you were, you bought a cart yourself and-
And then the one-balk item, um, the contract says $35. Do you know what we're paying now? Because we didn't have any comparison.
I, I think it's 30, under the old contract. That balk item is for anything over and above one balk item.
Right, because we get one per week, so it's over and above, so it's 35.
Or, or if you're a pay-
Pay per, per bag.
Per bag customer, and you have a sofa or something, then you would pay that one-time fee, yes.
But that's not a change from what we currently have. We still can put one balk item out.
Right.
I mean, that's current.
I was just questioning the price, what it was before.
But that's not any change, right?
Right.
Okay, any more questions from the board? Any comments from the community regarding this issue? Yes, sir. You, you chose the perfect, right. Would you please come to the podium, sir?
Just one other thing, if I can, Mike, before you jump in. The, the breakdown of the costs associated with that is about, um, a dollar over the five-year period, because there are escalators in each year of the contract. The additional cost to have, to have carts, two carts delivered, will be a dollar five per home per month. Dollar five per home per month, so, um-
I was going to take it up to $20.11. So that would be your, your trash?
My year one?
Yes, your year one. That would be your trash, your 21-leaf, and then the cart, which would be $20.11 per month. And, um, I think you said we were paying 1997.
1997.
1997.
It basically averaged out, and I could be off a few pennies here. But under the standard contract where you are right now, and I believe with the extra yard waste two days, over the five-year period, you're paying the same price that you're paying right now, as an average over the five years. If you put the cart in with it, you're going to be paying an average of a dollar five per month over what you're paying right now, for the next five years.
Dollar five per cart.
Not per cart, total.
Right, the current is 1997.
1997.
With, with the 21-leaf waste, that's another 11 cents.
No, Gary, 1997 is what we're paying now. The first year would be 1895 for the base bid.
Right, but I'm just using, if I were using current year figures. And it's really goes, drops down, because our quotes, our bids coming in less. So if, if you go, take the quote, so you start with 1891, you add 11 cents to that.
It's 1895 with 11 is 9, 1906.
If you, do you have them broken down for each year on there?
Yes.
Okay, so if you look at the standard, you're at 1991 for the third-year price. So that's going to be your five-year average.
Right.
1991 plus 11 cents on that is going to be 2002, right?
200-
Mm-hmm, 2002.
2002. So it's basically-
The dollar for the, the recycle.
For the additional yard waste days, your five-year average will, with the additional yard waste days, doing it the way you're doing it now is going to be $20.02, and you're currently paying 1997. So for the most part, your rate's going to be exactly the same for the next five years. If you add the cart to it, it's going to be an extra dollar five per month.
Correct. Okay, now, sir. Tom, you may as, hang just in case, thank you.
I guess I was just looking for a point of clarification. Currently, we have, we get four bags a week. As I'm reading this, it's 96 gallons, so does this mean we're going down to three bags a week? It's the equivalent of going down to three, since basically you have a 32-gallon bag, times three is 96. So are we losing a bag a week now with this deal? And paying more?
Tom, do you want to re-
So, um, the 96 gallons that the cart will hold is less than what you're currently having under your four-bag limit. I think currently, your four-bag, the specs say 36 gallons, 436 gallons, so that's a 144 gallons. So equivalent of 144.
Right.
I can tell you that, so the cart, when we convert to these cart contracts, people fit it all in there for the most part. If there's an extra bag outside the cart that needs to be picked up, our guys will pick up that extra bag. It will not need a tag or anything else put on that. They'll pick that up as part of the contracted services.
To be more specific, uh, the contractor is required to pick up that extra bag.
Oh, okay.
The volume of, volume of material does not decrease.
Okay, so that answers your question then. Okay, are there any other questions regarding this? Before I ask the board for- Tim, are you getting up because you're moving?
And I think it may have been mentioned in your previous meeting, you do have surrounding communities that have converted to the cart programs. I don't know if you've done any research in reaching out to them to see how they're citizens, because every community will have some people that say, this isn't going to work, going to work for me. And, um, typically, our experience is, we're seeing, you know, I've been in this business for 34 years, haven't always been in it with the carts, but the carts have been part of it the last 15 years. It comes in, and, and we can go either way. I, I'm just-
We understand.
I'm happy I'm the low bidder for all the options, it makes it a little bit harder.
And we understand that, but we're, we're trying to assess the information that we have so that we could make the best decision for our community. So I appreciate that. Tim, you were, you want, you have a comment that you'd like to make?
On Tom?
I'll be back.
Okay.
Uh, Tim Murphy, 1524 Pine Hollow Road. Uh, speaking as a member of the Shade Tree Commission, this just occurred to me tonight, and I apologize for not being prepared. I don't know how this mechanical arm works, but my, my specific interest is in, is there, is there a conflict with overhanging trees?
Uh, there is not a, a conflict with overhanging trees, because the automated arm will come out and pick up and dump, and it won't be any higher than, where, where some, uh, overhead issues do come into play. So our trucks, if you're familiar with trucks that have forks on the front, uh, that pick up commercial dumpsters, we have a container that's mounted on the front of that truck, and the arm dumps into that container. Okay, and then the truck then, when he empties, will lift up and dump. So he's typically, he is typically emptying when he's, um, he's always got to be looking for not only trees, but overhead wires and things of that sort. So, um, that should not be an issue with the manual collection or the dumping portion of it.
Okay.
Okay, and one, one more question regarding the, the, the per-bag option. How, how does that work? Do you opt in or opt out each year, or, you know, can you?
Yes, you do opt in, uh, or opt out each year in Ja- in July. Uh, our contracts run from July to June. If you opt out, you opt out for the year, and you purchase tags from either the township or Waste Management to affix to your can or bag of trash. Up to 36 gallons.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks very much.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, one, I'm looking at what appears to be option number three, the regular collection service and totes. The scope of work of the tote alternate requires a successful bidder to provide all customers with a 96-gallon container and a 64-gallon container. I could hide my neighborhood in a 60, or a 96-gallon container.
And, and that's why, Mr. Hawk, you might be suited for the bag program, where you pay by the bag to dispose of it.
Can you just, can you do the bag and, and just one 64?
One's for trash and one's for recycling. I can't, you can't use them interchangeably if that's what you're, you're thinking.
But you know, if you do the bag per week, it's $6 per bag, and so you put a bag out each week, that's 20, it's more expensive to do per bag, that's $24.
And when I said per week, I probably, most people that are on the pay-as-you-throw program, as we call it, the P, uh, the, the bag program, don't typically put a bag out a week.
Oh, really? Okay.
No. Uh, if they did, they would be better off just going with it. So, um, when I said the week, that's, I prob- I was wrong in saying that. It's, it's more like- Every other week or every three weeks, depending, because it's not the 13-gallon white trash bag that's in your kitchen. Many people will take that and put it into a larger 32-gallon black trash bag, and that's what goes out to the curb. And so, um, just to, a fin- a final, it's, certainly is your call to make. I think the cleanliness is a big issue. I think that the lids eliminating the blowing of recyclables, more so than the blowing of trash, is another issue that's, that's a, a plus for it. And, uh, the movement of your recycling volumes from the trash volume to the recycling, which helps ultimately for grant monies, uh, is a, is another benefit, benefit to it. The disadvantage to it is you're going to have some residents that are going to say, it's too big, I can't fit it in my, and it's, it's costing a dollar more, a dollar five more per month for the utilization of it, so.
Any other board questions?
Mr. Trish, was your question answered for the price per month?
The recycling's a commodity. The company has the truck in the neighborhood. Why, why wouldn't they just encourage as much recycling as you want to put out, put out? And why wouldn't we have it where if you just need the recycling can with the lid? I mean, the garbage you can put in the bag and tie it up. The recycling, you can put in the can with the lid. I mean, why, why didn't we think of that option? I mean-
I thought of that after, I thought of that after the fact.
But as far as the prices, yeah, I'm, I'm satisfied with the prices. If, if that's what we're going to pay, I'm, I'm for it.
Okay.
Okay, board members, uh, just for listening to you, I'm going to sense, I'm looking for, is this, uh, so that I can, at least one of us need to make the motion that, um, I'm going to get, my sense is, there's not sufficient support for the totes.
Because I'm- I'll, I'll just, I'll just say this, I, I think your, uh, sense is probably right. I appreciate all the bidders. They gave us all the options we asked for. Um, and, uh, personally, I have a pretty small house myself, but we could rearrange things and make it work. Um, it's just, I heard from a lot of people who either A, are, are intimidated by the size, B, can't find room, or C, have problems. We have a lot of homeowner associations, and are, are concerned about that. And it's, right now, it's causing stress that I, I don't really see a reason for it. I know this is the future. I know it's probably ultimately inevitable. But, uh, I just, there's not a groundswell support for it, and I, I can't tell these people what the pressing need is for it. So, um, that's all.
I think, and again, I'm using my cognitive skill and, and assessment abilities. That's why I got where I did educationally. Uh, at any rate, with that in mind, do any of you want to make the motion? If not, the chair will be happy to make the motion. Hearing none, the chair will make the motion. Uh, I will move that we award our way, our, uh, solid waste contract be awarded to Waste Management with the twenty-one-leaf waste pickup in the total amount of seventeen oh-eight-two-seven oh-five is presented. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Lindsay. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none, Madam Secretary, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Ms. Lindsay?
Aye.
Mr. Christman?
Aye.
Mr. Hawk?
Mr. Hawk?
Aye.
Mr. Judge?
Aye.
Motion carried, so ordered. Thank you very much, board members. Thank you very much for, for the community, for your input. We certainly appreciate that as we deliberate on this, this very difficult issue, because it has a great impact on our community. And with that, I'll return the agenda to the chairman. Mr. Hen, oh, I'm sorry.
Just a parting word. I just want to thank you for the opportunity. We look forward to continuing, continuing to work with the, uh, the township, and, um, we'll stay closely connected with everything that needs to be done. It certainly won't be, uh, a lot of the prep work between now and July first for, for carts and things of that sort, although the carts were going to be a little bit later on. But thank you for the opportunity. We're, we're happy to continue to work with you.
And I would, I would thank you for your past contributions to the community. I appreciate the fact that you have worked very closely with us during the last contract, and I hope that with that continued relationship moves forward and moves this community forward as well, and thank you.
Thank you. And normally, I would hang for the rest of the meeting, but I have a trip that's getting me out of town early tomorrow morning, and I'm going to roll.
That's right.
I appreciate your being here tonight as well. I yield the chair to Mr. Henry.
Mr. Christman, thank you for handling the trash talk tonight. That was even more exciting than the on-lot sewage discussion. So we will now move to new business, and we are going to take under consideration Resolution eighteen fifteen, authorizing the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and National Natural Resources for funding to support the Oak Park Greenway Study. Mr. Wolf, could you explain the Oak Park Greenway Study to us?
Yes, board members, uh, this grant application would request a total project amount of sixty thousand dollars, fifty percent of which would come from DCNR and fifty percent from Lower Paxton Township. It would be an activity that would have to be funded in the two thousand and nineteen budget. The Oak Park Greenway Study would study land acquired by Lower Paxton Township last year for purposes of a greenway. Uh, and the study would basically determine what improvements would be needed along this strip of land that extends from roughly Mater Ballfields to the north, south to Locust Lane, crossing Locust Lane to approximately Community General Osteopathic Hospital. So the purpose of this grant application is to study the area, to determine necessary improvements to actually begin a infrastructure project for a greenway, uh, development along this, uh, stretch of stream channel and open space.
And the greenway would then be available for the public to...
Yes.
...hike along, walk along?
Yes, it would.
Use if they want to get from point A to point B without having to drive?
Correct.
Very good.
And that was the township's purpose in acquiring this property, uh, a, a year ago. What was acquired by the township was, uh, a little bit more than a donation. We spent twenty thousand dollars on the purchase of, Mr. Stein, five parcels? Seven parcels?
Five.
Five parcels. Uh, to get the area designated here in green.
Any comments or questions from board members?
Let's do it.
Any public comment? Saying none, do we have a motion on Resolution eighteen fifteen?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash fifteen, authorizing the submission of the grant application to PA DCNR for funding to support the Oak Park Greenway Study as presented by Mr. Wolf.
So moved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Lindsay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Very good. Item B under new business is Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixteen, which would authorize the submission of a grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community, uh, Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for funding to support Heroes Grove Phase Two. And we have Christine Hunter with us this evening to explain what Phase Two of the Heroes Grove Project would be. And Mr. Penizoto is going to speak as well?
We're going to triple area you.
You're going to triple, wow, wow. And Mr. Minsker, we have everybody.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Vince Penizoto, I'm president of Heroes Fund Incorporated, and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Just very briefly, I'm going to go over where we are now with, and where we expect to be in Phase Two. Bill Minsker is going to go over what the venue has been used for so far and what is anticipated to be used for. And then Christine's going to talk about Phase Three. It's actually Phase Three that she's going to be addressing, not Phase Two. Phase Two is, uh, fully funded now. In Phase Two, we expect to put a roof over the, the stage area, lighting for the, the roof as well, enclosing the electrical panel that is already there today, but making it more secure. Putting in the remaining eight flagpoles. We have three flagpoles that are in currently. We're going to just put all eight of them in, and then as we get donations for them, we'll put the appropriate plaques with them. The, the other two things in terms of access, we want to put a ramp down below where the access road is leading up to the stage so that the people who are using the stage area and have their equipment can roll the equipment up into the stage area rather than toting it the way they're, they have to do today. And lastly, to place stairway from the entrance, the upper entrance, down to the, uh, stage area. Again, because the, the access, the, we're, we're looking at people rolling down the hill and thinking, hey, we don't want to take that risk any longer. Uh, so that, that's what we're expecting to do in Phase Two. Phase Two construction will begin in two thousand and nineteen. Uh, the bids will be going out shortly, and then the construction will begin in, uh, two thousand and nineteen. The, uh, and as I said, that is fully funded as we speak. Bill, you want to talk about what the venue has been used for?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. After many years of preparation and hard work by our committee and support from the Board of Supervisors, our Heroes Grove, Dauphin County Heroes Grove Project is really very much, uh, being put to use. It has been used and is now being used also for community activities such as art shows, movies, concerts, band competition, uh, band concerts. There is an event coming up, which you may have started to hear about over the Memorial Day weekend. The Rotary Club of Colonial Park is going to start a, hopefully, an annual event over the Memorial Day weekend to salute the troops, it's called. And the first of these will be on, uh, May the twenty-sixth, from ten o'clock in the morning until one o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, we have many plans for activities over the summer, and we're trying to focus always with the idea that this is a county-wide project. It is the Dauphin County Heroes Grove Project. And we're trying to focus more on drawing more and more attention from other communities besides just the immediate local area for the use of this public facility. So it's happening.
Yeah, Bill, if I could just add, we've also had weddings there, too. And, um, RJ Harris on the first Saturday of May has chosen, this will be the third year, to do, um, support the troops. Uh, he used to have it at the Capitol, and now he's brought it out to Heroes Grove, and that's a great event also that, um, we've had a couple hundred people there last year. So hopefully, you'll support it this year.
So we are happy to see that the amphitheater, that the use of the facility's growing as it's becoming more well-known, people are aware of, of the ability to use it for programs. So we're thankful for that, and, um, as Vince shared, Phase Two is now fully funded, so we're looking ahead to Phase Three. And we are, uh, planning to submit a, a grant application to DCNR for Phase Three. And we are looking at this project a little more, um, holistically as Brightville Park improvements. There are some playground renovations, really needed upgrades to the playground apparatus within the park that we'd like to, uh, pull that together with the Phase Three of Heroes Grove. And Phase Three, uh, what we propose is to put in a, a welcome building that would have a little concession area and restrooms that's at the, um, top of the, the Heroes Grove, just adjacent to the, um, parking lot of, uh, the shopping center. So on, on, uh, township property, but at that level, which would be more, uh, easier for people who are at, uh, watching events there to get to that restroom. There have been comments that the restrooms are distant for people at, at events. So as events are growing, more people are coming, we'd like to provide that, um, that service to them. So that's what we're here to ask you tonight specifically is for the resolution for that DCNR grant application.
Uh, board members should be aware that the township's contribution to this, uh, grant application would be ninety thousand dollars, and that would be towards the replacement of the play equipment, the structure that's in Brightville Park, as Christine mentioned, on a comprehensive basis for park improvement. And that is a planned expenditure by the township in two thousand and nineteen.
And it's a planned expenditure for township usage?
Correct.
Because it's part of the park as opposed to the county project?
Correct.
You said that would help us with the grant, um, if we had something that was all together.
It will, it will make it a more competitive bid at DCNR.
Okay, good.
More competitive grant application.
Do we have any questions? Any questions from members of the public? Well, you all have explained it...
I do have a question. I just thought, sorry, Mr. Chairman. I should have asked of the last, because they're both going to the same place. And, and I don't know whether it goes to Christine or whether it goes to Mr. Wolf. Do we have a time schedule when they, after their review and when the awards are made? I forget. I, I know we did this in the past.
Submission is...
Next week.
And award is a long time away.
November or December are, is when they announce the awards.
I think that's the same answer I got the last time we did it.
But in the, in the interim, Phase Two will be getting underway next year, so...
Yes, and, and what will happen is I will begin, we'll begin the process of the design of that. So I'll be coming back to you with information for you to review and for the township to, uh, approve as we, uh, take that into construction documents.
So Christine, Phase Three total is four hundred and twenty thousand?
Yes.
Right, okay. And what is the grant?
The grant, uh, request is for two hundred thousand.
Two hundred, okay.
And then we, we will be, we will need to apply for additional grant opportunities. So I will be back.
You'll be back.
You'll be back.
Well, it, it's very beneficial, I think, for Lower Paxton to be host of Dauphin County Heroes Grove. And this has certainly been a tremendous amenity to our community. And hopefully, uh, people who are listening will go out and take a look at it. It's located, uh, Brightville Park behind the Friendship Community Center. And we'll take a look at it, and I understand that it is available for additional usage. We're nowhere, even though it has had good usage, we can use it more. So if folks are looking for a venue, there's a great one right here in our own backyard. So feel free to get in touch with Lower Paxton Parks and Recreation Department, uh, which has the applications. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
We need approval of the resolution.
This is true. That is next. Hold on, just be patient, be patient. So, hearing no additional questions or comments, uh, do we have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen dash sixteen? This is for submission of the grant application to the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Phase Three of Heroes Grove. Do we have a motion?
Phase Two.
Phase Three.
Phase Three.
Mine says Phase Two.
Yeah, it should be Phase Three.
It is incorrect on the agenda. It is Phase Three.
Yeah.
Thank you for the correction.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve, um, Resolution twenty eighteen dash sixteen for the, um, grant applicant of the Department of Cons, uh, hello, Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for Phase Three of Heroes Grove.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Thank you very much for your patience this evening, and, uh, we're ready to proceed, and hopefully, uh, we'll have some good news on the grant later this year. Thank you. And now, Mr. Wolf, I hear you want to destroy more municipal records. Do you want to tell us a bit about that?
Yes, we have records from two thousand and twelve, zoning permits and plans, uh, five-year retention on those. They are, they are one year out of the five-year period and should be destroyed. And then we have some, uh, administrative records, personnel and benefit records uh, between nineteen ninety-nine and two thousand and eleven. Uh, those also only have a five-year retention period, and we'd like to destroy them as well. By the resolution before you this evening, should you approve this resolution, you authorize the destruction of those records.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand eighteen dash seventeen?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we approve Resolution twenty eighteen dash seventeen, authorizing the destruction of the specific records identified by Mr. Wolf.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hawk. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item D, we have a request for support from the township to make Blue, uh, uh, an acquisition on Blue Mountain. Uh, Mr. Wolf?
Uh, actually, this evening, uh, Ben Mummert is here to make this presentation to you.
Okay. Ben has been very patient.
Uh, I'm just delighted at the coordination of this, uh, of this Board of Supervisors. This is a, a great township meeting to, to attend, an example to a bunch of other townships, I think. Your township is very progressive, including in its implementation of mandatory dedication and fees in lieu, and that's an important instrument empowered by the municipality's planning code for securing the parkland that your munis, that your growing municipality needs to meet the demands and to sustain economic development. So I am, I'm Ben Mummert. I direct land protection and stewardship. I work for the Central PA Conservancy. We're a small nonprofit land trust headquartered in Carlisle. Our service area includes Dauphin County, where we overlap with Mandate Conservancy and the Nature Conservancy, uh, which we work closely with, including on this project. I appreciate, uh, your pulling up the map. In two thousand and one, we made an acquisition on Blue Mountain in Lower Paxton Township. Uh, it's identified in the lower blue, the lighter blue in the map. That was called our Shreckengast Acquisition, and we transferred it to State Parks as in addition to Boyd Big Tree Conservation Area in two thousand and seven. So it's, uh, now contributing to one thousand and twenty-five acres of open space, twelve miles of trail that are accessible to your township residents for cross-country skiing, hiking, running, uh, and mountain biking, for example. Right now, we're tantalizingly close to closing on the last eighty acres that we need to connect Blue Mountain Parkway with Boyd Big Tree Conservation Area. So the acquisition, which I'm here tonight to talk about, is identified in red in the map behind me. Primarily, the landowners for these tracts are the Spanglers, who you may remember working with on the Werfer's Burgers tracks. Since two thousand and seven, uh, we've worked on other projects. We manage other preserves, and we've made a lot of other transfer projects to State Game Commission, Pennsylvania Fish and Boat, and, uh, DCNR State Parks and Bureau of Forestry. But in two thousand and fifteen, we heard from Mr. Spangler, and over the last two years, we've worked closely and negotiated a purchase price that we know that we can secure with grant funding and one, uh, which Mr. Spangler has agreed to, understanding that it represents a substantial charitable contribution. So our total project is valued at half a million dollars for eighty acres, and we've secured, uh, thirty percent of that and intend to apply for fifty percent of it from State Parks, I'm sorry, excuse me, from Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, the Community Conservation Partnerships Program. Now's a great time for me to point out, please, having more than one project... Now's a great time for me to point out, please, having more than one project in your municipality in no way affects the competitive advantage of any other applications. So that said, we have an outstanding need of one hundred thousand dollars. In order to close this acquisition, we've secured a fourteen-month purchase option from most of the donors. And we've also secured contributions as part of that thirty percent I mentioned from the Nature Conservancy and National Wild Turkey Federation. We also have the support of Susquehanna Appalachian Trail Club, Appalachian Audubon, and, as was a donor on our Shreckengast acquisition, the Pennsylvania Falcon Reassociation, which I think is really cool. And that's partly because Blue Mountain, also known as the Kidde Tini Ridge, is an important bird area, recognized globally. And it's critical not only to our quality of life and the character of our communities, but to the quality of our environments. And we're part of the Kidde Tini Coalition, which is seeking to protect this ridge in partnership with DCNR, all the way from the Mason Dixon Line up to Delaware Water Gap. So how could the township contribute to this project? For one, we need a letter of support, just expressing that this does conform, for example, with your municipal Parks and Recreation Plan, where it was identified as a greenway and as a priority parcel. We could use a reminder that this is consistent with your greenways plan. And in fact, your greenways committee organized in two thousand and seven almost around this key tract of land between, or around securing, a connection from Blue Mountain Parkway to Boyd Big Tree Conservation Area. And then we could use financial support to help close that one hundred thousand dollar gap. In the way of financial support, the township has implemented, as I mentioned, fees in lieu of mandatory dedication. And so a developer, for example, McNaughton Homes, can elect instead of setting aside parkland and dedicating it to the township to pay a fee in lieu, which your township, I believe, has set at twenty-three hundred dollars per dwelling. So that money is set into a designated fund where your township ordinance provides that it's restricted to the acquisition of Parks and Rec facilities or the development or design of those facilities. McNaughton Homes is the builder immediately south of this tract for Autumn Oaks and then up the mountain Estates at Autumn Oaks. So Estates at Autumn Oaks is in Phase One right now. There are two more phases. Each time a phase is completed before they can record their final subdivision plan, they need to pay the fee in lieu if they're going that route. And the two thousand and thirteen master site plan identified that McNaughton Homes was electing to pay fees in lieu instead. So to put it in perspective, our total outstanding need to close on this eighty remaining acres to protect two miles of the Kidde Tini Ridge in your township and to provide connections to recreational opportunities is about half of the remaining homes for McNaughton Homes Estates at Autumn Oaks. So as shown on the map, those homes will eventually directly abut the mountain and should provide a clear and present reminder that this is a ridge which is highly developed. And should future owners, unlike the Spanglers, well, let me focus on the Spanglers. The Spanglers have, in part because of the example of their Uncle Herm, kept it open to the public for hiking and hunting, only on goodwill, under no obligation to, and kept open the East Shore Darlington Trail, which was the original alignment of the Appalachian Trail. But a future owner wouldn't necessarily need to, could close off the trail. And that would mean that anyone from Lower Paxton Township or the Greater Harrisburg area would need to drive all the way out and around and find their only access in Middle Paxton Township, over ten minutes away and six extra miles, which could really cut into somebody's ability to go out there and run or get outdoors during the weekend. So with that, I'll entertain any questions. I'd be happy to explain.
So the pink area is what we, on the map, on the screen is what we're, what is directly to the east of the pink area?
To the east are homes.
Just homes.
Okay, so the dark blue is Lower Paxton Township's Hocker Park.
Okay.
And then the gray is Blue Mountain Parkway, the only pass over the mountains, six miles all the way out to the Susquehanna River, or four miles all the way out to Mandate Gap. And folks, if these properties aren't secured, folks would have to keep driving over the mountain past Hocker Park, down onto Fishing Creek Valley Road to access Boyd Big Tree Conservation Area. So we want to, we want to preserve the area in pink for mountain preservation, to protect stormwater views from the valley, certainly. And last but not least, important recreational opportunities for residents in the township.
So to the east of that pink area, to the right, as we're looking at it, there are homes currently there?
If you were to slide the mouse.
Like right where, right where the arrow is at the moment, right in there? Or is that forest land?
So.
That's forest land.
That's forest land. That's what I was thinking from, so who owns that forest land? Would the pink area connect something?
This, pink area, Hocker Park, Lower Paxton Township's park on the top of the mountain is part of the Darlington Trail. And if you can, you could park here at our park and walk the trail, if you can go through the pink land, which is now private, through Baloney Park, Paul Mahoney and Alex Boyd, and then into Boyd Big Tree, which was donated by Alex Boyd.
And to the east of Blue Mountain Parkway, there are homes. There are about six homes there, and I think you can just make some of them out.
But the rest, the dark green areas all represents forested land?
Correct.
So who owns that?
It's all divided among private ownership.
All divided.
As was this entire ridge before nineteen ninety-nine.
Board members, if you give me a second here, you can see the individual parcel lines.
Oh, wow.
Come on, give me a hand here.
But the, the green lines are regional trails, which your Parks and Rec master plan identifies as, as a pressing need for more hiking trails. There are over twelve miles of trails accessed via Boyd Big Tree Conservation Area.
Actually, board members, there are in the pink area, and it's not showing up real well because of the color. But there are one, two, three, four, five, six, or six or seven individual parcels in that area.
And five are owned by the Spanglers, and two are owned by the Potagers. And so that last fifteen acres owned by the Potagers, we're negotiating still.
So this restricted fund that we have, George, does it have, does it currently have money in it that could be used only for a purpose like this?
It can be used for any recreational purpose. There is some funds available, yes.
Do we know how?
Not off the top of my head, no.
And when McNaughton Homes does start the next phase, that means another seventy thousand dollars in fees in lieu for that phase, followed by another seventy thousand dollars.
George, are there any current plans for that anticipated revenue?
We use it all.
We use it all.
For instance, that revenue is part of what we will use to pay for the playground equipment in Brightville Park.
Okay.
So yes, we do use it. We don't turn it back. The money we receive from developers is required to be used by the township within three years of deposit on account, or we have to give it back, and we do use it.
No, we don't want to give it back.
This would be an eligible use if you would desire to allocate funds to it. That, of course, you haven't done that this year. You could open up your budget, or you could do it as part of next year's budget.
And we're certainly not asking for it to be included in the two thousand and eighteen budget. It would be the two thousand and nineteen budget.
So I guess what I'm getting at is this anticipated revenue, there's current revenue and anticipated revenue. Even though we make a point of expending it all for the purpose of which it's been given, it's not earmarked for something else yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
And how much do you need altogether?
We have a one hundred thousand dollar outstanding need, which represents less than twenty thousand. It represents less than twenty percent of the total project value, so the value of the land based on appraisals. And to put that another way, that means that the township would be getting an acre for every twelve hundred dollars that it contributes. By comparison, if you accept land from a developer, right now your rate is point zero two three five acres per dwelling. And so in that case, it would take eighty dwellings to equal, I mean, I think it would take about eighty dwellings to equal two acres. In this case, it takes about forty dwellings to equal eighty acres. And so your township's been very shrewd and intelligent in leveraging other partners' interest and contributions. In this case, the state is in a position to contribute half of the funding necessary for this project. And other donors have stepped up too. So it's an extraordinary opportunity to make that money really go a long way.
Who will be the owner of the property once this is complete?
We had owned the Shreckengast acquisition between two thousand and one and two thousand and seven, when we turned it over to the state. The state, as you may know, is in no position right now to really be accepting new responsibilities. They've been laying off, laying off employees and cutting, slashing budgets, really. And so it's the same deal with the Game Commission, as a matter of fact. Both the state and in a lot of cases municipalities rely on small land trusts like Mandate Conservancy or Central PA Conservancy to actually bring these deals together and make them happen. So we would be holding on to the property and operating it as a park in cooperation with our neighbors, Lower Paxton Township's Hocker Park and Boyd Big Tree Conservation Area.
And, and under the corporate, the corporate bylaws or the charter of your organization, it would forever have to remain a park. It could not be flipped over and sold off for development down the road.
Oh, absolutely. And in fact, there are deed restrictions included with the DCNR funding that we'd receive. The DCNR funding comes from Keystone Parks and Rec Fund, which is funded from realty transfer taxes. So when you buy a four hundred thousand dollar home, six hundred dollars of that goes to fund these types of projects. That's the reason the state's able to help support this acquisition, even though they can't take on the land. But the state, as I think we heard earlier, DCNR has to rank applications. There's always much more of a need than, than the money that's available. And so the competitiveness of an application has a lot to do with whether it's ready to go, whether all of the funding's on the table to actually complete this acquisition, it's committed, and whether there's a substantial commitment from the local partners. And so they look to those organizations that I mentioned, both for their contributions and for their support letters demonstrating that it really is an important and valued project in the local community, and of course, to the local municipalities. And so it sends a very important, strong signal.
Ben, I have a couple of questions. Question number one, I'm making an assumption, I don't like to assume anything ever, that tonight you're asking for the letter of support.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, and I think we'll be able to, well, I would certainly be supportive of that. Number two, you're asking for additional subsidies, which we may or may not be able to even accommodate in this fiscal year.
Or two thousand and nineteen.
Because we may have to budget for another year. So knowing that you need the money, knowing how that land is there, my question to you is, has your agency approached Paul Mahoney? The reason I'm saying that, what's right next door to you?
Okay.
The Baloney, and that is Boyd and Mahoney. Mr. Boyd is now deceased, and in the will, that's how that piece of dark blue property was awarded to the Commonwealth. But the light blue piece that's called Baloney was jointly owned by Mr. Mahoney and Mr. Boyd. Mr. Mahoney is the one who's doing the Baloney piece to you. So, and because your piece of the property that you're looking at, which is the makeup of the Spangler property, and which, I'm reaching out for another question, but I'll come back to the question after I ask you the question, is our suggestion, you may want to sit down and make an appointment to see Mr. Mahoney. And I will tell you that Mr. Mahoney is not in town very often, but his daughter Susan is, and she's taken over much of the corporation. And she, in fact, would have a say in how money is spent out of their giving foundation. And so you may want to make an appointment with Susan and/or her father, Paul. But do not use my name.
That'll be the end of your grant request.
No, you may, because Mr. Mahoney and I are neighbors, so we're very good friends. But nonetheless, I know that he's very philanthropic. I know he wants things like this to grow and continue. And so I would, I'm just saying to you, that may be an approachable individual who is caring and giving. And I think Susan would also have ears.
I appreciate that very much.
You're welcome. Now, my question is, I know that property is Spangler, and George, you may have to respond to part of this. Is that part, is also part of that land, or was it once part of the Buchanan Tract as well? It is, Buchanan is still separate? Are they still privately held?
The Buchanan Tract's separate. It's not, it's not one of those.
Almost at the extreme eastern edge.
Because those two people are very good friends.
Okay.
Both of them worked for me once upon a time.
Yeah, I believe the Buchanan Tract would be roughly right up in there.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I thought they were contiguous with one another. Okay.
In fact, I may be even off on that a little bit.
Yeah, it's over there. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chris, would it be easier for him to get in touch with Susan going over to?
You would have used me as a conduit.
I just asked Mr. Wolf if we had any information that we could give the young man in order to contact. And he thought the best way would be get in touch with Susan over, I guess.
Well, yeah, it's through, and George probably has Susan's phone number in the office.
I do not, actually.
Oh, don't you?
I just asked him and he said no.
Oh, is she in the directory?
Yeah, she's probably in the Rotary Directory.
Oh, then I would have it.
Well, I don't know what address. I don't know whether she's using her parents' address when she comes into town or whether she simply stays at the Best Western overnight, because she lives in Boston.
I mean, if he could even just email her, if we could get an email.
If we can get an email. I think, George, here's my suggestion. Either you or I can, tomorrow, when we're at Rotary, we can ask.
Oh, let me see what's in the directory.
Why don't we work that, why don't we work that out, so we could move things along here, you know, after. Do you have more questions, Gary?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Just real quick, just to clarify, so there was no anticipation that we would need, that we would use general fund monies for this?
Well, technically, fee in lieu funds are general fund monies that are reserved.
That's fine, but these are, these are monies that came from development?
Correct.
And they're supposed to be used for recreation?
For park or recreation purposes in the township.
Okay, so we anticipate we would have such revenue?
We anticipate a specific amount every year. Some years, we don't receive what we anticipate, and some years, we receive more, depending on what developers bring to market. For instance, if we're talking about the estate of, if they, or Stray Winds Farm or any of these developments, if they decide not to move forward with a phase, then they don't pay the fee in lieu.
Right, it's all contingent on market forces and things like that. I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a handle on our potential commitment here.
Well, but what you're asking for tonight?
Is a letter.
It's a letter.
It is a letter, which, which I'm sensing there's a consensus for that. In terms of when, in the grant process, would you need a dollar commitment? Is that something that a two thousand and nineteen budget item can, would that work?
We absolutely need a commitment to the amount of the contribution by June.
June of?
Of this year.
Of this year. Okay, so we have a little bit of time to consider that aspect.
Now, in the meantime, the grant is due April eleventh, and so it would be helpful for us to be able to write an application, knowing at least what, what we can count on, even if that amount might change or be a bit more.
Well, and let me just add one more question in regards, since we're, now we're not sure how much money we'll have for this. Just if I was following, the main issue here was benefit, was access to the trail, to have a continuous trail?
That's right. Yes, sir. The Darling, former East Shore Darlington Trail has been closed almost along the entire rest of the land.
It's that green line to.
And it used to extend all the way east to Mandate Gap, and that was the former alignment of the Appalachian Trail. But it's been closed because it was on private property.
And I'm just wondering, the whole pink area, what do, does it, obviously, I mean, you're not going to go back and change anything now, and you've got commitments, but what's the thinking of the size? How did we arrive at the size? I know the land was donated, but. I know the land was donated, but how did you arrive at that particular size?
Sure. So the Spanglers own just about all of those outside parcels, and they've agreed to a partial but donation of the value of bargain sale. Where the trail cuts through are two tracts. It's straight through the middle of those. One is owned by Mr. Spangler, who's in his 80s now, and the other is owned by his son, who's moving away and needs to sell the tracts. That's part of why this project's so urgent to complete this year. The tracks further down the mountain, a lot of that is also owned by the Spanglers, part of it, that 15 acres is owned by the Pottigers. But that land was much less expensive, because those are steep slopes. Coincidentally, those steep slopes are what you're actually seeing from vantage points all across the township. It's also those steep slopes that are higher risk for stormwater, water contamination, and runoff and things.
Okay. And I know we're gonna, we, or you, or, we would get a great deal on the acreage, but since now we're really talking dollars and cents, I just wanted to make sure understood, you know?
Okay. Speaking of dollars and cents, to sort of try to get us to some sort of resolution here, we're in consensus on the letter. What is the opinion of the board as to a financial commitment? Are you interested in making one? And if so, in what range? Because I'm gathering you need to know that for your April 11th.
It'd be very helpful.
So any thoughts from board members as to whether we want to earmark these funds for this, knowing then they will not be available, I would assume, for other things?
Correct.
Well, Mr. Wolf, did you not say that some of that fee-in-lie money was going to be buying...
Well, that's what we use it for in general.
Right, okay. So have we earmarked any of that money for the Brayfield Park?
You haven't done the 2019 budget.
Oh, so that's going to go for 2019?
Yes.
Okay.
Just out of curiosity...
We're really, really early in allocating funds for next year at this point.
We're early, but...
I can tell you that you can do it, you will, you could potentially then have to delay something else.
Right. What is the amount of money that you budget, whether it materializes or not, but that you budget in that?
Roughly $250,000 a year for park capital improvements.
And as of now, for 2019, none of that money is committed?
Well, no, right now, for 2019, you've committed $90,000 for Heroes Grove and $30,000 for Greenway.
Okay.
So...
That would be next year's budget.
Yeah, that's, you're up to, you've basically committed half of what we would typically spend for park improvements next year.
Okay. Worthy projects, though. Any thoughts as to whether we want to make a commitment tonight or not?
That's tight.
He sort of needs to know.
I don't know. I've...
I am not prepared.
Do we, yeah, we don't usually get requests for that, that size of a commitment with one, one meeting to deliberate on it, do we?
Well, why don't we do this?
It is a great project.
And you, we have one more meeting prior to, and I realize it's going to cut you awfully close. Do we want to take the issue under advisement and think about it until next week's workshop meeting?
I think we have to.
Since it's sort of new information to us, let's take a week to think about it. So, we'll proceed, and I don't suspect we necessarily need to have a vote on a letter of support. We can proceed with that, and then we'll take this under advisement until next week.
Thank you, Chairman Henry.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Okay. So we'll put that on the agenda for next week, as we think it over between now and then.
And that would include the letter?
Well, well, the letter, we're sort of in consensus on the letter. I don't know if we necessarily need to take a vote on the letter.
But didn't he say in the letter that he would need a commitment?
Oh, he would need a commitment, yeah.
Commitment on the amount that we would be donating.
And I, I know, what is the exact amount that you're asking for?
Our outstanding need is $100,000.
So are you asking us for $100,000? That's what I need to know. That's the bottom line.
You wouldn't turn it down, correct?
I would not turn it down, absolutely not. And I also wouldn't turn down a support letter on April 10th that said a decision would be forthcoming on an amount of a contribution.
Okay. But the reason I'm asking for the amount is because if we're going to consider in our budget an amount of money to give you, I need to know what it is. I can't say, well, I think it may be this, I think it may be that. What is it that you're asking for?
Our request is $100,000 to complete our need.
Less $90,000 from your grant, correct?
No, it's $250,000 from DCNR.
That was a joke.
Okay. Okay.
The hundred is outside of the grant.
That's right. The hundred is needed in order to leverage the $250,000. One way or another, we need to close the $100,000. TNC, the Nature Conservancy, has made a contribution, and we're trying to work with some donors. Mahoney's are going to be folks that we reach out to, trust me.
Well, why don't you do that reach out, and we will put this on the agenda for next week, and next Tuesday night, we'll give you an answer.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Yes. Sure.
I just want, Terry, you want to come on?
Hi, Terry.
Hi, Ben.
The question I have, Terry Bachnight, as manager of Parks and Recreation, is can you tell us what you anticipate to be the impact on that little dark blue township park, which would end up being the entrance way for an awful lot of people to get into this wonderful trail, as far as maintenance, restrooms, parking, and that kind of thing on the land that we have there?
So Terry pointed out that right now, Lower Paxton Township owns Hawker Park, which is coincidentally right outside of its borders in, up in Middle Paxton Township. Eventually, if the township were interested, that could be part of the transfer to state, to state parks for the Boyd Big Tree Conservation Area. And that may relieve the township of some of its responsibilities and, well, responsibilities for that park. On the other hand, the park is an exceptional asset for the community, and we only are seeking to promote its proper use. And having more folks up there walking, bicycling, and jogging helps to provide some passive surveillance, so that you don't deal with folks who are using it in illicit or improper ways. We, again, are trying to secure rights and, we're trying to secure rights, which the township residents and local community members have enjoyed for decades, just on the goodwill of the Spanglers. And so when I went up there, for example, February, a weekday, I met runners on the trail. It's really special that folks have that opportunity. I think it's, it's highly utilized. Most folks don't leave any evidence they were there, but I do recognize some folks are troublemakers. Terry, does that help to answer the question, address the question?
I think so. You know, the anticipated amount of use and what the expectation would be as far as policing, storms, that kind of thing.
Absolutely. We want to partner closely with the township. This is one step towards that. But in helping to manage the Spanglers, the Spangler acquisition, we'll provide a more active partnership than those private landowners living pretty far away were able to.
Okay. Very good.
Can I just ask you a question? When did your organization start?
Oh, 1982, and we were founded as the organization to save Stony Valley, another Dauphin County project.
Okay.
When we did the Maloney tract, which I call the Shrecking Gass acquisition, another name, I was 11 years old at the time, but we do a lot of transfer projects, and we manage about 400 acres of preserves and parkland, too.
And where are you located at?
In Carlisle.
Okay. I'm sorry, you did say Carlisle. I'm sorry.
We just acquired 35 acres at the headwaters of the Lee Torres Spring Run, a famous trout stream there.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Let us now move to item E, subdivision and land development. We have some improvement guarantees. Mr. Wolf?
Board members, within your packet, you will see that there are five improvement guarantees, three of which are extensions, one with an increase, and two are reductions. If there are any questions, I'll attempt to address any questions, but these are complete as far as staff is concerned for board action to see straightforward.
Any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the five improvement guarantees as presented by Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. We have a motion to improve, to upprove the improvement guarantees. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Judd. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And finally, item F, payment of bills for Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority. Madam Treasurer?
Make a motion that we pay the bills of Lower Paxton Township and Lower Paxton Township Authority.
I'll second. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's been moved and seconded that we pay the bills for the Lower Paxton Township and the Lower Paxton Township Authority. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Do we have any additional announcements or comments from the board?
I didn't want to steal your thunder.
If not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.